All right, everybody. Let's go ahead and call this work session of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order, and we will begin with our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. President Taylor.
I'm here.
Vice President Cottle.
Here.
I am here. Trustee Calvert. Trustee Church. Trustee Nicolet.
President.
Trustee Thigpen.
Here.
Student trustee Victoria Gomez is not here right now. We have a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're going to stand, we're going to have our pledge of allegiance, and let's see. We're going to have Mr. Jeff Bossler lead us in the pledge on today, and I haven't set up my knee thing yet, so I can actually stand. I'm setting it up now.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bossler. We're going to begin with a public comment. Do we have any public comment, J.J.?
Shannon Coley.
You said Coley? Well, welcome. Thank you very much for being here. Let's get your mic turned on so we can hear you. Hang on, I think Banji's going to come over and help and make sure we get you. Great.
Good afternoon. My name is Shannon Coley, and I am here to object to the divisive anti-racism resolution being proposed by this board. I will tell you the only reason I feel safe to speak up is because my children are grown. I do not fear retaliation for them. I have studied both Robin D'Angelo and Ibram X. Kendi's theory of anti-racism, critical race and critical race, and I believe they are deeply divisive and straight-up racist. We must reject their new repackaging of racism where discrimination is acceptable if it achieves equity. This resolution is overreaching and emotionally manipulative. How antithetical is it that in order to stop racism, you are choosing to tell white children they are inherently racist and oppressors? Not by their actions or words, but by simply being born white. Do you not see what this extremely divisive curriculum will lead? By telling children they have white supremacy, white fragility, and unconscious bias just because of something they have no control over? Shaming and guilting them is child abuse. Here's a novel idea. How about unity training resolution? If we are going to virtue signal, let's do it right. I am all for teaching the virtues of honesty, integrity, civility, hard work, and service. And how about we respect everyone's civil rights, not just some? Oh, I'm out of order. I'm out of order. I lost it. Okay. I believe we are losing the distinction between education and indoctrination. Education will no longer be about producing independent thinkers. It will be about producing obedient activists. Children will be forced to parrot ideology they do not agree with in order not to be bullied or shamed.
I'm sorry, Ms. Coley, your time is up. You had three minutes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Thank you for being here. J.J., do we have other public comment?
James Bentham.
Welcome, Mr. Bentham. Thank you for being here.
I want to pass these out to the trustees and the record. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's James M. Bentham. For the record, I'm here to speak about the budget. The county has made a huge investment in technology for student usage, especially during the flu COVID-19 season. Has there been a positive increase in student academic and reasoning skills? Before a new budget is settled on, the use of technology needs to be evaluated. The tests at the end of this year can help be used as a guide for moving forward. A committee on economic policy would be able to help assist the trustees, and so I encourage trustees to set up a committee on economic policies. I've asked that a copy of a part of an article from Reboot evaluating critical thinking be passed to all the trustees and people present and to go onto the record. Executive summary: The rise of new learning technologies has fueled fierce discussions over whether technologies hurt or help student learning. Some observers have argued that educational technology impairs student learning. The point, they point to research showing that technology distracts students, harms social development, causes attention issues. On the other side of the technology debate advocates point to research on how devices can tailor learning experience, structure classroom time more effectively, and facilitate more active learning. Near the, at the bottom of the second page, internationally, there is a weak link between technology and outcomes. We found little evidence of a positive relationship between student performance on the PISA and their self-reported use of technology, and some evidence of a negative impact. On average, students who reported low to moderate use of school technology tended to score higher on the PISA than non-users. But students who reported a high use of technology tended to score lower than their peers who reported low or no use of technology. On the third page, the results regarding tablet use in 4th grade classes were particularly worrisome, and the data showed a clear negative relationship with testing outcomes. 4th grade students who reported using tablets in all or almost all cases scored 14 points lower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentham.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you very much, J.J. We're going to go on to our agenda item 1.05. This is an action to adopt the agenda. I'm looking for a motion from my colleagues, if that is your pleasure.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Thigpen. Is there a second? Seconded by Clerk Minetto. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion is carried. Let the record show it is unanimous. Now, we'll move on to agenda item 2.01, which is the reason why we're here on today. This is presentation by staff and discussion by board regarding district fiscal year 2021 tentative budget for all district funds, process and status, update on federal funding, recommended next steps for the budget process, consideration of possible direction to the superintendent and staff, and approval of the fiscal year 2122 tentative budget. This is for discussion and possible action. Before us is our CFO, Mr. Mark Mathers, and our budget director, Jeff Basel. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you very much, President Taylor, trustees, Superintendent McNeil. Welcome to this brunch budget work session. Hope you're enjoying it so far. As you all know, April 15th is the statutory deadline for the school district and all local governments to submit their tentative budget to the state. This is kind of the first step in the budget process. So today, we will be presenting our recommended tentative budget for your approval. So the motion we will be looking for is approval of that tentative budget with certain adjustments that my socially-distanced budget director, Jeff Basel, will go over. So before we begin, I have to say tentative is the operative word here. This is a highly tentative, tentative budget that you're being presented with. There are huge decisions that the legislature still needs to make this legislative session, including whether to go with the governor's proposal to partially implement the new funding formula, the pupil-centered funding plan, or whether to go ahead with a full implementation of the pupil-centered funding plan. In addition to that, the state has received a word that it will receive billions in stimulus funding itself, in addition to the amounts that will receive and other school districts receive and other local governments receive. So they will need to make decisions on how to appropriate those billions over the next biennium. So again, many, many decisions to be made by the legislature, and of course, we have decisions we need to make in terms of our federal stimulus dollars as well. So I think it's safe to say that the final budget you'll need to approve by June 8th, and then the amended final budget that we'll likely present to you after the session is concluded will look a lot different than this tentative budget. But again, this is the process laid out in state law, and we have to submit that tentative budget to the state on April 15th. My last kind of cautionary word before we begin is I realize that some of the slides are really, have some heavy-duty math, and that's okay. We will go through that, but we have various slides throughout that kind of summarize where we're at in case you get lost in that heavy math, and heavy math is just kind of par for the course when we talk about budget. So with that, in terms of our agenda for this afternoon, we'll start with an update on federal funding. Of course, we saw massive new developments since we last met in February, and then we'll start going through the tentative budget. I get the fun part. I get to talk about the revenue side of the ledger, and then Jeff will get to talk about the expenditure side of the ledger, and we'll kind of wrap up with, you know, the projected deficit or surplus for the general fund. And then in section three, Jeff will talk about our other funds, since those other funds represent nowadays roughly half of our total budget. And then we'll conclude with next steps. So in terms of our federal funding update for you, last month, we did talk about the second major stimulus act. It's called ESRS II, CARISSA, SIRSIA. There's probably a fourth name coming, but that was passed, as you'll remember, the last week of December, signed by President Trump, and allocated additional funding for school districts on top of the CARES Act that was passed in March. And our share of that is still estimated to be $34.8 million. Unfortunately, we do not yet have the opportunity to apply for those funds. The State Department of Education has not yet ruled out a grant application process, so we don't have access to that funding yet, but hopefully that'll happen soon. And then in addition to the ESRS II guaranteed allocation to our school district, there is a GEAR II part of CARISSA that'll provide $12 million to local education agencies as well. So hopefully, we'll get a piece of that as well. Staff will be bringing back a formalized finalized list of uses for ESRS II as soon as, again, that grant application window opens. But for now, this provides an outline of staff's recommendations for the use of that ESRS II money, again, $34.8 million over two fiscal years. The first line we're going to talk a lot about, it's kind of a theme running through the budget presentation here. The governor's recommended budget proposed reducing class size reduction funding by half. And so you'll recall that class size reduction funding, where that program provides additional dollars to each school district for grades 1 through 3 that school districts must use to hire teachers to keep class sizes at, you know, a much lower level than certainly other grades in our district. And the recommended budget does propose to reduce that funding in half. So, you know, there is a policy choice here for you this afternoon. In light of that cut, which you'll see reduces our revenues to be at a deficit position, we could not hire those half of our normal CSR teacher allocations. That would be the worst-case scenario. Or we can hope for the state to restore funding for those teachers, which we can still hope for. But in the meantime, the other option would be to shift the costs of half of that classroom, class size reduction program to stimulus, to be funded by stimulus funding. And that's what our recommendation here is today. So over the two years, that amounts to $20 million of the $35 million or so that we will receive. So a significant portion would be used to backfill that cut to class size reduction. And then you can see the other proposed uses that include, you know, a very much accelerated, ramped-up summer school programming by the school district. We also have $5.4 million here, you can see, for additional teacher allocations or other allocations of other staff, kind of in a contingency basis if school opens at 75% capacity, or if we otherwise choose to create that allocation buffer for our schools and increase the allocations at each school. Yeah, as you can see, we have learning strategists also planned, instructional software, and so forth. And charter schools that serve Washoe County students will also receive a portion of the $34.8 million. That's estimated at $478,000. In addition to that, there is a GEAR I allocation that we've received that will fund nearly 13 full-time equivalent positions in the areas of mental wellness and re-engagement. So that's a significant investment, and we're happy to be able to do that as well. But again, staff will be coming back to you with the actual grant application as soon as that window opens. So the major development between our last meeting in late February and today, of course, was the passage of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARP, or ARPA as it's known, or ESRS III. And there is a requirement that funding should go out to local education agencies within 60 days, so that probably will overlap quite a bit ESRS II now. This was an historic bill. This was the largest grant application for K through 12 in federal government's history. So it was an historic bill, certainly, and school districts fared well as part of that $1.9 trillion act. Public school districts will receive $123 billion nationwide. In addition to that, there's $800 million for school-based and wraparound services for homeless children and youth, called McKinney-Vento, if that rings a bell at all. And the act is very flexible in terms of our use of those monies. Basically, we can use those monies for basically any activity that we now perform, along with increased costs for the pandemic response, if we still have those costs, and we will in terms of PPE, school repair and improvements for, related to air transmission, and many other uses listed in the bill. Importantly, the bill does set a floor for learning loss activities of 20%. So 20% of the $35 million we receive will need to be spent on academic recovery, as we call it here. Makes total sense. I know we probably, we likely will have, we will likely submit a plan to spend much more than 20%, but that is the floor established in the act. There are some maintenance of effort requirements of the state, and basically, they cannot reduce funding for K through 12 more than what they would reduce other functions of the state. And so that's the primary maintenance of effort requirement. There are a number of tests that the state must pass or ask for a waiver for as part of this bill. And then there are a series of state and also local district, what are called maintenance of equity requirements. And all those equity requirements are, the purpose of which is to prohibit schools from reducing funding for, school districts from reducing funding for high-poverty schools within their district disproportionately. And so there's, again, new formulas that operate to guarantee that those high-poverty schools are not disproportionately reduced. Certainly, that's something we'll be mindful of and wouldn't have done anyhow, but it's nice to see those restrictions there as well. And in addition to the funding for schools, there is $7 billion allocated for E-rate. Included in that is funding for Wi-Fi connectivity for lower-income families. So, you know, this fiscal year, we've had to pay for close to $1 million in terms of Wi-Fi hotspot units and other, and other equipment for families who did not have Wi-Fi service, could not afford Wi-Fi service. There will be a massive program to provide assistance to those families under this act. And then there's $39 billion for childcare and $1 billion for Head Start. So lots of really good things here in this bill. It is a massive bill. Our share is at a minimum estimated to be $78 million. So again, huge program, huge supports being provided to school districts through this bill, which is much appreciated. It could be higher than that as well. So, but at a minimum, we think $78 million will be Washoe's allocation. And to clarify something, I think I said at the last board meeting, even though the bill has a commitment date of September 30th of 2023, because of federal regulations, the actual effective date for committing these funds will be September 30th of 2024. So this is a busy chart, but it's trying to show how the three stimulus acts operate. They're somewhat phased. And so again, the first act was the CARES Act, total of $13 billion passed last March of 2020. The original expenditure deadline was December 31 of 2020. That's been extended to December 30th of 2021. And so our share of that was roughly $9.2 million. So now we have an extra calendar year to spend that by. And then the second tranche or phase of federal stimulus funding was ESRS II or CARISSA, $54 billion. And again, our allocation is a little, is around $35 million. That must be spent by September 30th of 2023. And then we have the massive $128 billion K through 12 portion of the American Rescue Plan, and those monies, again, we expect $78 million or so, must be spent by September 30th of 2024. This is kind of nice in that it's a rolling, kind of phased approach. So that concludes our federal funding update. I can stop for any questions you may have.
Vice President Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mathers. I may need the help of Superintendent McNeil or maybe even Deputy Superintendent Byers-Darf on this question. One of the slides, you talked about us essentially doing a tentative plan for how to spend some federal dollars. And I know that the district is currently working on a strategic plan for recovery. To me, it seems it would be more beneficial for us to see that plan, and as we're seeing that plan, then committing dollars to supporting that plan. I can understand today why you would want us to decide to cover the state's portion that they're cutting for class size reduction. For the rest of it, to me, it seems that we should just understand the money's there, but then make those decisions in unison with the plan as we get it versus putting the dollars out there, then seeing the plan. It might get a little bit confusing. I don't know if that is what is intended here, or if I've missed something. Please correct me, but that would just be a recommendation.
Superintendent McNeil? Thank you very much, and thank you for the question, Vice President Cottle. So when you see those expectations on slide five, just to point out that that's ESRS II funding, and so we have ESRS III coming, which we would be building around the strategic plan around response and recovery. And so those priorities, and we're hopeful that with the survey going out, that the survey will kind of elicit some additional information, but that's really around the two years of that funding, and what that funding would be going for is the response and recovery strategic plan.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, Mr. Mathers, this federal funds, this is not necessarily tied to the tentative budget. So if we change that or adjust as time goes on, we can do that. You're mainly looking for us to commit covering the class size reduction as part of the governor's budget, and then hopefully, between now and June, the legislature changes that. Do I have that right?
Yes, Vice President Cottle, you do. That's exactly right. The way grant funding works is there are adjustments, amendments to the grant application all the time, and so the budget catches up to that. And really, the only reason why we're kind of showing you these uses here today is the linkage with the class size reduction issue and the fact that we're recommending that half of the class size reduction that was cut by the state be taken out of the general fund and placed here, at least tentatively. So that's the linkage to the general fund, but you're exactly right.
Okay, perfect. That makes sense, because without it, we would have, our tentative budget would show a $10 million deficit that'd be covered by fund balance. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. I see Dr. Nicolet, and then trustee Thigpen. Thank you, President Taylor, and thank you for those questions. That clarified some things for me, too, Andrew. Simple questions, just for understanding. When you say committing or obligated, what does that mean as far as putting together the budget? And then on slide five, how did 75% end up being the number for enrollment? How did we end up on 75%? Thank you.
So that's simply kind of a contingency. We're not saying it will be 75%. We're kind of, we said as a group and kind of outlined assumptions for the budget, and I think we talked about that in January. And we're, we had assumed that by and large, the social distancing requirements that exist now would be lifted by the time of next school year. But if that's not the case, as you know, we'll need more staff to staff those socially-distanced classrooms. So this is an allocation in case we go to some middle ground of 75% capacity versus 50% capacity versus 100% capacity. But again, those dollars are also there for potentially other uses. If we do go to 100% capacity, they can be used for additional staff regardless. And I'm sorry, trustee Nicolet, I forgot your first question.
The definition of committing or obligating funds, what is that process?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's subject to a little bit of debate among fiscal staff and others. Usually, that means funds have to be encumbered by that date. So committed equals encumbered, which means ordered, not necessarily received and paid, but at least ordered. I'm going to go ahead and use that definition until I hear otherwise. So for, for instance, for the third phase, ESRS III here, where we say funds must be committed by September 30th of 2024, that's within the fiscal year 25 budget. We would, we could go ahead and budget monies in the fiscal 25 budget if we have some left for, you know, the purposes detailed in the act. But we would have to encumber it, i.e. execute a contract or a purchase order by September 30th, until we hear otherwise. And, you know, there could be an extension or, you know, relaxing of that definition, but usually, that's the definition when it appears in laws.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a quick question on, about backfilling, you know, the cuts to class size education in terms of the priorities, and this may be ESRS III, I'm sorry, not ESRS II that I'm thinking ahead on.
Okay.
Are we considering using some of these federal dollars for programs going away like our Victory Fund and similar programs?
I'm going to look to our superintendent here a little bit, but we certainly have contemplated the end of those programs and what those schools have, who received that funding in those positions from those programs will be left with. And so I think, yeah, the intention is to help restore funding for critical positions at those schools, but I'll defer to the superintendent for any additional comments.
No, thank you very much, Mark, and thank you very much for the question, trustee Thigpen. So just to go back to slide five, if you take a look, and you'll see that line item for learning strategists, and that's an exact, direct result of the Read by Grade 3 reductions. And so we wanted to make sure that our schools had that support in place with those learning strategies. strategists. And so as we move forward with Zoom, Victory, those are also going to be built into the priorities, depending on what the survey data also shows us, because we want to be very cognizant of the fact that we've got the survey out there. And so what those priorities would be able to build into. One thing that we've talked about is having the availability of what we would call mini-grants or edu-job grants to our schools, so that they would be able to build in the structures on what type of supports and what type of positions they feel is necessary for their schools. So that's one idea that we've been discussing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Thigpen. Mr. Mathers?
Great. So just to conclude this section, again, we, or the board adopted some guiding principles in terms of use of federal stimulus dollars. I think it was back in the January meeting. And we still want to abide by those guiding principles. And the most important one of those is, again, not to load up general fund costs, if at all possible, onto federal stimulus dollars. We want to use those stimulus dollars to provide for additional or new or heightened levels of academic recovery or mental and social supports. We don't want to just throw as much as we can in terms of general fund costs over there because of that fiscal cliff that would be created in two or three years where we'd have to find some source to cover those positions that we all shifted over to federal dollars. So that continues to guide us. Unfortunately, again, as we've discussed, the exception to that is the class size reduction program. If we were to not do this, if we were to just accept what the state has proposed and only fund the half of the former CSR program, you know, budget amount, that would mean a reduction of more than 100 teachers in grades 1 through 3. So that would be the exact opposite of what we want to achieve, right? We want to reduce class sizes, and so that's why we've recommended this approach. The only alternative, again, if we wanted to keep those, that funding in the general fund, would be to find reductions equalling roughly $7 million, and that's extraordinarily difficult at this point in time. And again, I think we'd be confronted with the question of, well, why are you doing that when you're getting all this federal money? So that is the thinking that I think Jeff will go into when we get to that point in the presentation. So now we'll begin talking about the tentative budget itself, and we'll focus, of course, on the general fund, since that's our largest single fund, roughly $500 million. Again, I get to talk about revenues, and I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. But again, the scenario that we're modeling here is partial implementation of the pupil-centered funding plan, which is what the governor has proposed. And so under that plan, there's basically three major buckets of revenues. There's revenues that the state receives, that it would distribute through the partial pupil-centered funding plan model, and that amounts to $178 million. Then the second bucket of revenues are major local revenues. These would be revenues that, under a full implementation scenario, would actually go to the state. Currently, we receive them in the Nevada plan, and under the partial proposal, we continue to receive them for the next biennium. And these are a significant portion of our revenue sources, as you can see, although that $372 million number does include charter's share, so we'll go into that. That's a significant portion of the $372 million. So we don't get $372 million, but that's the total local revenues. And then there are minor local revenues of $6 million. That's the only amount that we would keep in a full implementation scenario. So that's why we break it out that way. And so in terms of state revenues, you saw this chart at our last budget workshop. The major state revenues that go into the distributive school account or DSA are shown on the left. And then those revenues flow through somewhat of a black box, the pupil-centered funding plan model, although it's transparent enough if you want to get into it. But basically, then that provides for a distribution to each school district. There are different per-pupil amounts for each school district. And our share, based on that model, for those revenues only and based on the state's projection of our enrollment, is $178 million. So we're given that number, and there's not a lot we can do about it. That's just what the number is. So again, the second set of revenues and the largest portion of revenues are our major local revenues, and the first of those are property taxes. We, like other local governments, do receive a property tax. Our rate for the operating portion of our budget is 75 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And so we've, you know, all these revenues drilled down quite a bit to come up with the best forecast we can at this point in time. When we talk about property taxes, the point of this slide here is to show you that more than 90% of property taxes come from existing secured properties. And when I say secure, that refers to, you know, a secured property tax role, and that is land and any buildings and improvements attached to that land. So 91% of our property taxes come from that type of property tax. The other types of property taxes we receive are related to new development, 4% usually, over the last several years at least. And then there's an unsecured role. These are personal property taxes. These are things like business inventories that are taxed at the same rate, but they're unattached to the property. And then the last segment of property taxes we receive are assets of electric utilities and other utilities where it's easier for the state to centrally assess those properties, and so they're called centrally assessed. And so then the next step we go through in terms of analyzing our property tax revenues are to consider the annual property tax caps that exist in Nevada law. And so for single-family owner-occupied residential homes, like probably most of us have, the cap on how much your annual tax bill can go up is 3%. So even if your assessed valuation goes up more than that, you will not receive a tax bill more than 3% of the prior year's tax bill. And then there is a formula for non-single-family residential in state law and for fiscal year '22. That cap is 6.2%. So if you own a commercial building, your tax bill can't go up higher than 6.2% in fiscal year '22. And so this drives, again, the revenues. And as you can see in the pie chart, roughly 62% of development in Washoe County by assessed value is single-family homes, with roughly a third being commercial and industrial. Our next step in estimating it was to gather information from the county on, again, the assessed valuation of existing secured property. And again, that's 91% of the total. And then we compared that to the annual billing for the current fiscal year, and that showed that taxi, tax, total tax revenues for the district would increase by 3.6%. So this is what we assumed for the tentative budget. Late Thursday evening, we did receive the state's pro forma estimate, and they actually estimated more than 3.6%. And Jeff's going to talk about kind of the offsets that increased revenue. The state estimated much more in terms of new development than we had kind of gleaned from conversations with the county. So again, that's kind of a variable that's very fluid. What is the level of new development going to be in any fiscal year? It's tough to project that. But the state provided a projection, and that resulted in a higher increase than 3.6%, which we by law have to follow. So we need to include that in the tentative budget. But again, Jeff will go through kind of how we, how we will utilize that additional funding.
Mr. Mathers, if I may? Can we go back, go back to page 14 for just a moment? I just want to make sure I understand the abatement piece at the bottom of that slide. Basically, what you're showing us is that if we did not have the cap that we have on property taxes, as you described just above this, we'd have a little bit over $31 million more to work with, based upon what we actually see as the increases versus, did I read that correctly?
You read that exactly right. That's exactly right. I can't say it better than you just said it. Yeah, if there were no annual property tax cap, the general fund would receive 21 million more per year. And our debt rate, we'd receive 11 million more per year. Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's a big drop.
Yeah. So our second major local revenue is local school support tax. So again, this is the portion of the sales tax we all pay that's dedicated towards school districts. Again, we spent a lot of time on this last month. We have looked at a number of different metrics and trends here. We've looked at U.S. statistics on personal income by month and spending and tried to establish some correlation between those numbers and our sales tax receipts. And maybe there's a mild correlation, but if you squint. But what you see here are the tremendous impacts of federal stimulus funding on personal income. So you see a big jolt in April of '20 and then a big jolt in January of '21. Those, that represents stimulus checks that people received. It doesn't always correlate to spending, though, because people have a hard time finding ways to spend that stimulus funding, frankly. They can't go to restaurants as much as maybe they would like to. They can't go travel as much as they'd like to, for example. So we actually did see a spike in the personal savings rates for some of these months, which is kind of nice to see, I guess, that people save some of that money. But it doesn't help our sales tax revenues, really. But again, we plowed through a number of statistics to try to forecast these revenues. And I guess the conclusion to all that is, last month, I was fairly conservative in my statements about local school support tax growth, because again, we don't receive out-of-state sales tax purchases, the sales tax on purchases. And so that has really muted the LSST we've received. If you remember fiscal year to date, this fiscal year, we are down 1% still in terms of this, our sales tax receipts. But what has changed, in my view, is to look at the amount of stimulus funding in that $1.9 trillion bill and recognize there is no way that doesn't flow through the economy. There is, this is, you know, this tranche of stimulus funding, ARP, is a factor of 10 over the original CARES Act package of last March. And so, you know, most of us have heard about the $1,400 stimulus checks, but what's important to remember is that's per person. And so for, we've kind of shown you here, for a family of four, potentially, they could receive more than $14,000 in stimulus payments over the fall, over time through the fall of 2021. And so we think that's going to be carried through in the economy. The Atlanta Federal Reserve Bank had projected 10% GDP growth rate for the first quarter. It's now revised it down to 8%, but that's huge, right? So as long as consumers are able to spend the money somewhere, we think they largely will, and that will carry over into our local school support tax revenue estimate. This slide is just kind of a rehash of what we went over last month. But again, we tried to break out spending on goods versus spending on services. And again, if you can squint, kind of, you can see, there no longer should be a pent-up demand for goods. We think by and large, consumers have gone online and purchased goods during the pandemic, and now they're anxious to get out and visit restaurants or travel or what have you. And that should benefit us. So that's the point of the table on the right, although it's, again, correlations are kind of hard to really come by here. And so our estimate for LSST is a return to normalcy estimate that you saw last month. We project 5% growth in fiscal year '22. And on that chart on the, on the right, you can see our numbers are trending up, and we just received January's numbers, and it's up almost 4% as well. So again, it supports our notion that the stimulus funding is working its way through the economy and ultimately coming back to us in terms of the sales tax. But I do want to say that that fiscal year forecast of $219 million is still less than what we had budgeted in the current fiscal year pre-pandemic. So we had, based on the state's estimates, we had budgeted $224 million in local school support tax in the original fiscal year '21 budget you approved. So even with an increase that we see in '22, we'll be below what we started off with in the current fiscal year. So we kind of crashed, you know, during the pandemic. It's been flat since. Again, we were down 1% in terms of revenues year over year through December, but now we see a rebound up, a trend up, but still not back to what fiscal year '21 revenues were estimated by the state to be. Then our third major local revenue is government services tax. This is the motor vehicle fee. This revenue has always trended very strongly. People here like to buy new cars evidently. It's been averaged close to double digits for fiscal year '13 through '19. And so we see strong growth here as people are out to, you know, out in the economy, get to spend the stimulus dollars, they may buy some new cars. So we projected 7.5% increase in '22. So here is a summary of our revised forecast for major local revenues. That's in the gold. We basically foresee a return to normalcy and therefore using those numbers, except at the time, property taxes, we were a little bit more conservative, and now that's along the lines of a return to normalcy scenario as well. So that's good news. But again, these revenues are not guaranteed, unlike in the current Nevada plan. So if there's any fluctuation in the economy, you know, a new strain of the virus, whatever, that could affect our revenues here and therefore our budget. In terms of minor local revenues, we haven't made any changes to the forecast. We will receive indirect reimbursement from the American Rescue Plan, and we will include that in the final budget. We just didn't do that for this tentative budget. So to summarize, we provided this chart that tries to do an apples-to-apples comparison of revenues we budgeted in the fiscal year '21 original budget. And again, we're in fiscal year '21, so the current year original budget versus what we propose, what we estimate in this '22 tentative budget. And so you can see for local sources, even though we're returning to normalcy, we think, the level of increase here is pretty, pretty minimal, pretty modest, 0.4% growth in those major local sources. That'll actually be a little higher now that we will be adjusting property taxes a little bit upward, but still, very mild revenue growth. In terms of state sources, we've kind of stripped out categorical grants that now are part of our general fund. And so when we look across the row at funding from the distributive school account, we're seeing a 1.6% increase, which, you know, just, is the glass half, glass half-full or empty? It's up to you to decide about that 1.6% number. But below that, you can see the CSR funding, again, is cut in half. And so overall, our total revenue sources are projected to decrease by 6.7 million compared to that original fiscal year '21 budget. So that is the situation we find ourselves in, that we've got to manage our budget around. And the last slide here, I mean, just to kind of, again, summarize at a very high level, we have two main buckets of funding here, and we're focused on the general fund. And as you can see, we added up all those sources, then subtracted out charter school's share of local revenues. They will receive the same per-pupil share of local revenues we do. And so in total, we expect to budget a little less than $520 million in total revenues for next fiscal year. Hopefully, that'll change as things evolve in the legislative session, but that's what we have in terms of our general fund budget. But then, of course, we have significant federal stimulus dollars we can use over the next two to three fiscal years. And so just to summarize, we showed you what those are, $112 million between ESER 2 and 3. So that certainly helps. We would be in a different situation and having different conversations if not for that federal stimulus dollars. So that concludes our revenue forecast portion of the presentation. Any questions? Okay, I must have.
I think we're good.
All right.
Go over to the, to the bad side of the ledger.
Yeah.
For the record, Jeff Balzo, Budget Director. So as you said, I get to show you the fun side of the ledger. So we'll start off with the expenditure projections. And this table here has a three-year comparison of our general fund expenditures by function. This is a typical way we present the budget, is by function in accordance with the state's chart of accounts. So you can see some major swings from the FY '21 adjusted budget to the FY '22 tentative budget. So I'll go over a couple of those major changes real quick. So in instructions, there's about, excuse me, just $108 million increase there. So in instructions, there's about, excuse me, just under an $8 million increase there. What that represents mostly is half of CSR class size reduction, moving from the class size reduction fund and now into the general fund or base funding. Special programs, that's where we've accounted for gifted and talented programming in our general fund budget. However, we've shifted all of gifted and talented programming to the gifted and talented weighted funding, which we'll go over later, later in the presentation. But it doesn't shows an expense in special programs now, but the portion that the general fund contributes to gifted and talented programming now shows towards the bottom in the transfer to other funds, which is part of the reason why you see a significant increase in that Student support services, the, the major change there, most of that $5 million is just, or about $4 million of social workers that were part of the state social worker grant, now becoming part of base funding and continuing that program in the general And then if we go back down to transfers, again, the, the transfer to G, gifted and talented weighted funding, along with English learners weighted funding, and our special ed transfer that we've, we've done on an annual basis over to the special education So moving on to this next slide, the beginning of this might look very familiar because we've gone over it in multiple presentations, but this is what's included in this general fund expenditure budget. So as we've discussed before, we had existing levels of staffing. We reset school allocations to enrollment. We also had known salary changes like annual step increases and a purse rate change, also other contract and inflationary adjustments. As we presented in our, in our last budget presentation, departments had identified $539,000 worth of budget reductions. That's included in, in this number. In those same meetings, departments also identified about $990,000 worth of vacant positions that we were able to eliminate. This budget also has a continu- continuation of the former categorical grants that are now folded into base funding, including the social workers, literate, literacy specialists related to read by grade three, and several other former categorical grants that are now in base funding. This budget also includes about $4.2 million in general fund support for our gifted and talented program, in addition to roughly the $1.6 million we get in weighted funding. There's also a subsidy for the English learners program of about $2.8 million. Again, just like GT, that's in excess of our weighted funding for English learners. We also increased our general fund contingency budget to 3.7 million, or 0.72% of our general fund budget. And this will help with, you know, potential fluctuations in our, our local revenues. Now that those aren't guaranteed, you know, we need to be more prepared, and we've, we've discussed this at the last presentation, to handle those potential fluctuations. So we increased the contingency budget up to 3.7 million. We also have some proposed reorganizations and new positions, a total cost of $54,000, which we'll go over here next. And then, as we've discussed in the presentation already, this budget assumes that we've shifted half of class size reduction funding in the amount of about $10 million over to SIR 2 funding.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Jeff. On slide 26, I noticed this, I just want to make sure I'm clear, other instructional programs go on from 9.5 million to 747,000. Hoping that you could tell us what's going on there. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your, for your question, Vice President Cottle. Sorry I missed that one. So that's EL programming was in other instructional programs in the general fund, but now we've shifted that over to the English learners weighted funding, and then that amounts down in the transfer now.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Please go ahead, Mr. Bos.
Okay, so now we're going to go over the proposed reorganizations and new positions. I'll give a brief summary of each of the proposals, and I believe we have chiefs here to answer any questions that, that may come up. So first, we have a summary of the, of the reorganizations and new positions that show the, the, the financial impact at a total cost of $54,000. So we'll start off with the Chief Strategies Officer reorganization with a proposal to reduce two executive director positions and add one Director of Student Behavior and Student Support to oversee behavior placements and hearings, the Student Athletics and Activities Department, and also R O T C program. The other proposed additional position is an attendance coordinator to help coordinate attendance work between department and schools to help in reducing chronic absenteeism. And the estimated savings of this proposal is $113,000.
Mr. Boszo, if I may, just a moment. Would you go over again what you said about the changes in the R O T C program?
Oh, yes, thank you for your question, President Taylor. So that's just showing that the J R O T C program will report to this Director of Student Behavior and Student Support.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to the next proposal. This proposal is between the Chief Strategies and Chief Academic Officer. So in this proposal, the Extended Studies Department would shift from the Office of Strategies to the Office of Academics, because the, the Extended Studies, Extended Studies Department is more closely aligned with the work being done in departments under the Chief Academic Officer. And there's no fiscal impact of this change. The next proposal is from the Office of the General Counsel. This proposal is to reduce one administrative investigator position and add one Associate General Counsel position. This will help alleviate the Department of Labor Relations from representing the district in all arbitration matters, and will also help ensure that all our public meetings can be covered by an attorney. This position will also assist the current administrative investigator as needed, and the estimated cost of this change is just over $43,000. Moving on to the next proposal, this is a shift of the Department of Labor Relations from the Office of General Counsel to the Office of Human Resources. And this will help reduce the potential for conflicting cases, and hopefully that'll save, or should save, the district money in the long term on outside attorney fees. And with this shifting of a department from one chief to another, there is no fiscal The next proposal is to, is under the, the Human Resources Office, and this would be to split the risk manager position in that department away from the employee benefits part of the risk management department, a downgrade of the position, and that would result in an estimated savings of about $26,000. And then also a proposed addition of one technician position. This is to help support our employee benefits department and the 12,500 planned members we currently have being served by, by three technicians. The estimated cost of that position is just over $70,000. So the, the net cost of the proposed changes here are about $44,000. Our, our next proposal is from the, the Business and Finance Office, and Mark will speak to this.
Shoot, you were doing so good, there were no questions, the way you were presenting. So this request is for a new position. Many years ago, there was a senior accountant position in our Student Activities Fund Department who provided kind of higher-level service and reviews of student activity funds. When that person left for another agency, that position was deleted. And unfortunately, we are seeing more incidents in our student activity funds. There is roughly 13 million of those funds that flow, that flow, or monies that flow through those, those school funds, but that really understates the level of activity. There's a tremendous amount of activity, of course, with our student activity funds. That's where fees we charge to students and athletic fees are posted and recorded. And frankly, that's usually, according to our external auditors, the first place where you see incidences. I'll just say it that way. And, and so combined with the reduction of, or elimination of that senior accountant position and a, at around the same time, a reduction of our internal audit staff, we're now only auditing four to five schools per year in terms of their student activity funds, which if you do the math, is, is a rotation of looking at a school's student, student activity funds every 20 to 25 years. So, you know, that, that really doesn't provide much deterrent or review for those funds. So we are requesting an additional position that, again, will restore a professional position to this department who will, and that position, one of the fundamental critical responsibilities will to be increasing training to all of our new principals, of which we have many, and new bookkeeper and secretarial staff as well. That, that happens, but not at a level we think is appropriate. And then that new position would also do kind of many audits of those funds, so get around and, and reducing that, that rate of reviews from every 20 to 25 years to something significantly less. So that's the justification for that new position.
Vice President Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mark. Sorry, I'm going to ask you a question. I'm hoping that in the coming months, after this position is filled and the individual is in place, that the board can get an update from staff on how we're going to audit these accounts and what's the new plan with this position to ensure that there isn't irregularities at the school level in these accounts. So I'm hoping that maybe next fall or something, we can, we can have that. Thank you.
Please go right, thank you, Vice President Cottle. Other questions, please, go right ahead. Mr. Boszo, back to you?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
That's all right. I was slow. I was slow, thank you. It's just a little question, but I'm, I'm trying to get the correlation between increased principal turnover. Is it just, is it a workload issue? Is it, what happens with that?
Well, I ju, I think it's just been over the last several years, and the superintendent can, can speak probably more to this, but it's part of our silver tsunami. It's just retirements of, of older folks, teachers who've become principals and they're retired, and we've seen it just a tremendous turnover in the last several years.
Thank you, Trustee Nicolet. Mr. Bos?
Thank you. So that wraps up the proposed reorganizations and new positions, and that moves us to our general fund tentative budget deficit or surplus. So here, this table shows the estimated general fund deficit or surplus under the partial implementation under the People's Underfunding Plan. These revenues that Mark has shown on prior slides amount to 519.6 million, and our total uses, which we showed in prior expenditure slides, also equate to $519.6 million for a structurally balanced tentative budget in the general fund. So going to the next slide, this one here, Mark presented earlier, but this is kind of summarizing how did we achieve this structurally balanced budget? So our source, our total sources from our FY '21 original budget to this FY '22 tentative budget had decreased about $6.7 million. Going to this next slide, we see that as the first line here. We also saw a decrease in our state special education revenue. That's based on being held harmless of our FY '20 revenues, and that was just under a million-dollar reduction there. What that does is if we have a reduction in our state special education fund or revenue, then our general fund transfer has to offset that reduction. So that's an increase in general fund expenditures there. And then all the other changes we presented at the, for the preliminary budget, and these changes we've discussed today result in an increase in expenditures of $2.3 million. So our net deficit before we shifted class size reduction funding over to SIR 2 funding was $10 million. And then with that shift of $10 million over to SIR 2 funding, that's how we achieved the general fund structurally balanced budget. So this slide here is just a, another table showing our total sources, so opening fund balanced our total revenues, and then our total expenditures and other uses, so our transfers out, and contingency budget. So before I wrap up the general fund here, as Mark has alluded to, we had a property tax increase for the, a revenue increase with the pro forma route we received late Thursday night, and that resulted in a $3.1 million property tax revenue increase. So our, our proposed changes to this tentative budget would include that $3.1 million in additional property tax revenue. And then to the, the uses would be to increase our contingency by about $1.4 million, so we get to 1% contingency. And then, as we'll, I'll show in a few slides here when we get to other funds, our workers' comp fund has been taking some losses over many years. Back in, I think it was the, the fiscal year 15, 2015 budget, we had decreased the workers' comp rate, so decreased revenue to that fund in order to help save $500,000 in the general fund. So our proposal is to increase the workers' compensation rate at a cost of the general fund of $500,000 to help that fund be more balanced. And then lastly, we would have $1.2 million set aside for ESP unemployment. So the governor has signed a emergency regulation that would provide unemployment benefits to ESP employees during the summer months. So the, that $1.2 million would be set aside for that purpose. So again, the, the general fund summary here, we have very little growth in our local revenues compared to pre-pandemic levels, and the state's 50% cut to class size reduction is not offset by, by other programs that are now in base funding. So the major changes, again, we have $6.7 million less in revenues, multiple, or about $2.3 million in, in new expenses, plus a million dollars in the special education transfer. And we're balancing the, the general fund budget by moving half of class size reduction costs over to SIR 2 funding. And I believe that does it for the, the general fund. Okay? So moving on to other funds, the first group of funds we have here are special revenue funds. So these funds account for our, our resources and expenditures for all of our grants, our adult education, our gifted and talented English learners, and at-risk weighted funding, our special education fund, and our E-rate proceeds. So this does not include our, our SIR 3 monies at this time. So the first column shows the state special education fund, along with our, our gifted and talented and English learners weighted funding, and you can see each of those have an other sources line. And what that is, is the general fund transfer to those funds to support our costs in excess of, of state funding. to support our costs in excess of, of state funding. Moving on to our internal service funds. As we've talked about at prior meetings, we had increased general fund support to the property and casualty fund, so that's included in this budget. Our health insurance fund saw significant savings in FY20 due to the pandemic and people not utilizing their, their healthcare as much. Trends indicate that, you know, we're, we're seeing activity increase in our, in our health insurance fund, so those costs are increasing. And that'll have a, you know, our sources will equal our uses, our total revenues will equal expenses in that fund for, for FY22. And then our workers' compensation fund, with that general fund proposal of increasing the workers' comp rate to get another half million into this fund. This table here doesn't reflect that, but that would significantly reduce the, the loss that this fund is, is taking on an annual basis.
Question?
Sorry about that. Trustee Nicolet, please.
Thank you. Just some clarification for understanding on slide 44. When you say E-rate, and we, I see it throughout the document, what is the, the number that I could attach to that E-rate? What are the proceeds from, from the E-rate dollars? And then very quickly, when, on the next one, slide 45, services provided between funds on a cost reimbursement basis. What kinds of services? Just, just for understanding. Thank you.
So thank you for your question, Trustee Nicolet. So E-rate proceeds have, have varied from year to year depending on the reimbursement rate from the, the federal government E-rate program and what projects we've done. I think we have over a million dollars budgeted in proceeds for, for FY22, and about 700, maybe $750,000 in expenditures for that fund. And then for your, your next question on the internal service funds. So the sources from, or for all three of these funds are costs from other funds. So the total sources for the property and casualty fund, that's a general fund cost that provides the revenue for that to help pay for our property and casualty insurance costs. And then for health insurance and workers' compensation, every time, oh, health insurance, if an employee has health insurance and the district makes a, a payment on behalf of the employee, so I think it's close to $800 or $900 a month for, for health insurance. That's a cost to the, the fund where the employee is paid, and then it becomes a revenue for the health insurance fund to cover our health insurance costs. And then the same idea with the workers' compensation fund, where a certain percentage of an employee's salary is, you know, there's a cost associated with that. That cost from the fund that that employee is paid out of become the revenue for this workers' compensation fund to pay our workers' compensation expenses.
Thank you. You do an excellent job of bringing it to where I am.
Oh, you're welcome. So moving on to our capital projects funds. So these, these funds account for our resources and expenditures for capital projects. These numbers here are also, have also accounted for the proceeds of a $49 million WC one bond issuance and $3.4 million for a medium-term note for our, our bus and white fleet vehicles, as well as pay-as-you-go projects. So moving on to our, our debt service funds here. So we have two funds, one specifically for WC one debt service, the other for our, for our other debt service. And this fund accounts for payments of our principal and interest on all of our long and medium-term debt. And our, our debt reserves and debt coverage remain, remain strong in this tentative budget. Next, we have our enterprise fund, and this is the fund that accounts for the activities of our nutrition services fund. And the enterprise, an enterprise fund should be fully self-supported by user charges. And the net position here includes costs of long-term liabilities, such as pensions, and the projected cash of the position at the end of FY22 is $6 million. Okay, so that wraps up our other funds.
So just to, I guess, just to summarize again, our total budget, we've fallen below $1 billion, unfortunately. I have to, I hate to report to you, but with the decline in capital project expenditures, our total tentative budget is only $912 million. So just wanted to share that one number with you. We have the, yes, largest budget of any local government in Washoe County by, by, by a large margin. So, so we've talked about some of the unknowns. Certainly, every budget work session we've had, those continue to exist. We haven't heard a lot of dialogue at the legislative level debate, in, in terms of debating about whether to move forward with the governor's proposal to partially implement the People's Center Funding Plan versus full implementation. And again, full implementation is the current law. It says you will execute full implementation of the funding formula on July 1. So we will see where the legislature lands on that. They have certainly had a number of hearings on the K through 12 budget and a number of questions that I think probably Lindsay will talk to you about later today. But again, no real discussion and no BDR yet on, on the legislation that would be required to partially implement the funding formula. So we will see how that goes. Again, this budget is based on the governor's proposed budget and that proposal to partially implement the funding formula. So we will have to change dramatically if we end up at a full implementation scenario. Certainly, again, COVID-19, you know, the trends are very favorable. We're hopeful, but we don't know what the governor's directives will be in terms of school reopenings for next school year. So there are still lots of variables operationally, logistically, to open schools fully, assuming again that, you know, we've turned the corner on, on the COVID-19 pandemic. And then, of course, other unknowns include enrollment changes. We've assumed, again, flat enrollment, and we're hopeful we actually get higher enrollment as kindergarten-age children return to the district and, and we see other kind of trends reverse that we saw this year. And then obviously, as you know, we have the Incline Village property tax lawsuit that, that I believe our Office of General Counsel will cover today later as well. We have not budgeted yet for any costs related to property tax refunds that we would need to absorb, so that would need to be factored in potentially in the future. Our next step really, until the preparation of the final budget, will be kind of the public engagement phase. We worked with our assessment folks and, and had discussions about the concept of a separate budget survey from the strategic plan survey that was planned. And, and based on those discussions, we've decided to consolidate the surveys together, and we think we'll get a lot better participation. We think we'll be able to reach out to a more diverse set of respondents that way, do a lot of marketing around that. One change to this slide, the survey period for that survey will be April 2nd through April 23, I believe. So a few days difference there. And then we'll do our budget forum virtually on April 7th next week. And so that'll be largely kind of a shortened version of this presentation to educate our families, students, and, and the public about our budget situation and what's going on. Certainly, we'll be reminding folks to take that survey. We won't have results of the survey by that time. But we will come back to you in May to review the survey results. There'll be Laura Davidson and crew that will do that. And then we have our actual public hearing on the tentative budget and final budget review on May 23rd. And in between then and now, we'll probably come back to you with a quick budget status update as part of a regular board meeting, and it'll be quick, I promise. So that lays out kind of the timeline. Thank you, Jeff. Again, you know, we, we will submit this tentative budget, assuming your approval with the changes we've recommended by April 15th to the state. Then we'll submit our final budget by June 8th. And again, we'll have that hearing in late May. And then we'll wait for the legislative session to conclude. Usually, there's a lot of action the last few days related to K through 12 funding. And so state law does allow us 30 days after the conclusion of the session to submit an amended budget, and that likely will be our approach. So we're getting around the halfway point in terms of the budget preparation season, I suppose. I know we're getting close to the halfway point in the legislative session as well. So things will continue to change and evolve, and we'll continue to inform you of those changes and come back to you with the necessary adjustments to our budget. So I think we're concluding our budget brunch here. It's, it's about time, right? But I'll, Jeff and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
I see you leaning, I see you leaning, Trustee Church. You got to get your mic on though, so they can hear you at home.
There we are, there we are. Hit the wrong button, I'm sorry. Very, very minor. I think you said May 23rd, unless I heard wrong. And I think you meant May 25th?
I think you're right. Thank you for the clarification.
People in the audience that are putting it in their calendars. And so I, I guess what I'm hearing, I've been pretty quiet today because things are in good hands with you. I feel very confident with you at the helm there of the budget. For the sake of the audience and for us and for me, we're going to see more changes once the legislature ends and we'll get a better, better survey of what's going on. Is that correct?
It's absolutely correct, Trustee Church. You know, historically, we've never received our per pupil number until the end of the session, and that per pupil funding number is not finalized until, again, the very last days. I mean, I remember last session, me and Mike fervently watching the video where the state was debating how to use marijuana funding, and they put in the K through 12 budget, and that changed everything. And so this year really isn't any different than historically where we have to wait for the state to get through its own state budget and appropriate monies. And so, yes, we don't, we think there will continue to be changes and debates, and nothing finalized really till the end of the session. I should also note to you, Trustee Church and, and the rest of the board, that in terms of the capital budget, we'll be coming to you on April 13th with our five-year capital improvement plan, and that'll give you the details on the capital projects outlined in year one, which will be included in this budget, as well as a plan for years two through five. So that also is going on as part of the budget process.
Thank you, Mr. Mather. Vice President Caldwell?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mark and Jeff, for the presentation. You all, you both do a good job of giving us the information a very detailed but concise and clear way. After being through this, now it's my third time. This is just a formality. It almost seems like, why do we even do this? Because we don't have the information we need to actually make the final decision. So I'm definitely in, in support because we're going to get the information later on actually what it's going to look like. It's just satisfying a state law that, that we have. So I'm happy to make a motion if everybody is good with that.
I think we're, oh, we do have public comment if we can delay that.
Sure, yes.
Just go ahead. Thank you, JJ. We'll have to receive our public comment.
James Benton?
Mr. Benton?
There are copies for the record and one for each of the people up there. Thank you. Good afternoon. James M. Benton for the record. Many factors have to go into forming an educational budget. What specific items will result in the best increase in academic progress and critical thinking? I believe an emergency budget committee is needed, a committee to not only work on the short term, but long-term goals. I'm asking that an article be passed out to everybody and put into the record, the tech advocate. Lower test scores for students who use computers often in school. 31 country study finds. On the second page, the Organization of Economic Cooperation and Development looked at computer use among 15-year-olds across 31 nations and regions and found that students who used computers more at school had both lower reading and math scores as measured by the P S PSI program. The study published in 2015 was actually conducted back in 2012 when the average student across the world, for example, was using the internet once a week, often doing software drills once a month and emailing once a month. But the highest performing students were using computers in the classroom, less than that. Those that use internet every day do the worst, said Andreas Schleicher, the Director for Education and Skills, the author of Students, Computers, and Learning: Making the Connection. At the end of the article, one of the comments they have is, perhaps it's best to invest the computer money into hiring, paying, and training good teachers. In reading, students who use the computer a little bit did score better than those who never used a computer. But then, as computer use increased beyond that little bit, reading performance declined. In math, the highest performing math students didn't use any computers at all. I'd like the board to consider this information and also to consider forming a budget committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, JJ. I'll return to Vice President Caldwell now for a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the fiscal year 2021, 2022 tentative budget.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's see, the second by Dr. Nicolet. Any discussion? Okay, seeing them, there's a motion on the floor that the Board of Trustees approves a tentative budget for fiscal year 2122. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Gentlemen, thank you. We know it's, it's, it seems like, I guess like Vice President Caldwell said, kind of crazy to approve it as tentative. We approve hopefully the final in May, right, by June 8th, and then it may all change and blow up and go all over again. But that's the way we do it. And the great state Nevada with the Biden legislature, it's legislature, but we appreciate really the work to make sure we can at least submit a budget that is balanced, and then we'll adjust as we go forward. Okay, thank you, everybody. We will go into, let's see if we have any public comment before we end.
James Benton?
Mr. Benton? Welcome, sir. You have three minutes. Need to get your microphone on, sir.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
My name, for the record, my name is James M. Benton. I'm here to talk about budget, possible budget issues for the board. The budget committee, a budget committee is needed, and I encourage the board to wisely check this out, make sure the school district doesn't experience any losses. How could the school district experience a loss? One of the issues is a technology issue. I'm asking that this public service announcement from the FBI be given to all the trustees and to be put into the record. I'm sure that many parents and students are concerned about data collection and unsecured systems that could pose risk to students. Many parents are working, students are in school. So I, I'm going to be speaking for some of the people that haven't made it here today. The FBI is encouraging public awareness of cyber threat concerns related to K through 12 students. The U.S. school system's rapid growth of education... The U.S. school system's rapid growth of education technologies, ed tech, and widespread collection of student data could have privacy and safety implications if compromised or exploited. On the second page, they go on to say, "The increased use of connected digital tools in the learning environment and widespread data collection introduces cybersecurity risks of which parents should be aware." If there are any risks or data breaches, parents should be informed. That was my comment. "The FBI recognizes that districts across the United States are working hard to address cybersecurity matters in their schools to protect students and their data. For districts seeking assistance, there are numerous online resources, consortiums, organizations available to provide support on data protection matters and cybersecurity best practices." They list some of the ideas to do this. Discuss with their local districts about what and how ed tech technologies and programs are used in schools. Another, research school-related breaches which can further inform families of student data vulnerabilities. Connect regular internet searches of children's information. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Benton.
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you, JJ. Okay, that's it for the agenda. That's it for our public comments. So we will adjourn the budget work session. Woo, that's it. And then we'll convene our meeting, our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees at 2:00 PM. Okay, thank you, everybody. We stand in the German.